All right, so in theory, we are now live on YouTube. Russ is gonna check that while we do. I'll go ahead and say thank you and welcome to everybody for coming. Maybe I should say that in the opposite order, but whatever. A couple of points of note for how we'll run things. Obviously, this is going to be our presentation table. So if you are on the agenda and presenting something, that'll be up here. So you'll have a mic. Everybody will hear you very well and everything can get well broadcast there. We do have the podium for anyone that is going to public comment on anything in particular. And there is a mic in the podium as well. Currently turned off, but just pick it up and flip the switch on the bottom to turn it on. And that will be good for you. When we get into the comments, if you are doing a public comment, ask who's tried to keep your comment to within two to five minutes or so. And then allow somebody else to speak. If you still have more to say or an additional point to make, by all means. But we just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to continue to cycle through when people are talking. That being said, let's go ahead and officially get this thing going with the pledge of allegiance as we typically.
It's only my second day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so can everybody hear me if I'm this way? Or do I need to actually pick up the mic?
It's good.
I can use good.
Everybody's good? All right, so let's start with the roll call of board members. Selah, Dave Hemingway as chair.
Mark O'Hara.
Steve Blake.
All right, and so now we will move into our announcements. The first thing that I want to announce is actually not directly something that we control or have anything to do with as far as what we can do. The Pillsbury Lake Village District, as of today, has had all three of their commissioners resign. So they have no commission. They have no ruling authority at this point. They still have their clerk and they still have their treasurer. So they previously had put out a call for people that might want to join that commission set. Obviously, they would have had to have been members of and living in Pillsbury Lake Village District to do so. I don't know if that's even a possibility anymore because it would be a challenge to get appointed when there's nobody on the board. However, I felt it worth making that known. So if you or anybody that you know is actually interested in that, you should contact their clerk and they can contact whatever legal they need to to figure out how you can help them. The second announcement is for the, what I started last month, the Walk with the Chair. Typically, that is now going to be going on the Thursday following this first department head meeting. So that'll be Thursday at 1:30 here. That may be slightly delayed as I do have a 1 o'clock meeting here in Town Hall. So you might get to chat with Russ for a couple of minutes until I get out of that before we can go for a walk. But that is just, anyone who wants anything to talk, to ask questions about things or to vent concerns about stuff that's going on, please feel free to stop by and do so. Next on the announcements is the Small School Study. And I will simply read the boilerplate that I've been given for that one. And that is a community meeting about the small school study. It'll be held here Tuesday, July 13th from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Webster Town Hall. This meeting of Webster residents will include invited guests from our neighboring town of Salisbury, plus all elected school board members have been invited. Hosted by Bruce Johnson, retired reading specialist and Mike Jett, former MBHS science teacher and principal. They will answer questions and hear concerns of parents and taxpayers. Combined, Bruce and Mike have over 45 years of combined experience to the Merrimack Valley Schools, have raised four children in Webster, and this will be a true community meeting to listen and share. They won't have activities to cycle dialogue. And both towns have been a part of the Merrimack Valley Collaborative School District for over 55 years. They hope to educate everyone in the important underlying principles of that partnership. And so that is what they have mentioned. Again, if you are unaware, the school system is doing a small school study with a possible underlying agenda of closing one of the small schools or combining them. So that is definitely something to come out and listen to the presentation and/or voice your concerns and questions. Moving along to my last announcement, that is the project status report, which normally I would try to show you, but due to my packed agenda, we won't be doing so. This will be available on the website as a nice table format to be easy to see. But I'll briefly go down them. The Police Department Cruiser, that was completed before, but now I believe that we finally have all of the lettering and everything as well. Is that correct, Chief?
Lettering is on order.
On order, okay. The Police Department Server has been completed and installed. And so now we get to use it for several years. IT upgrades. We have upgraded the Town Hall server with more storage for, for example, being able to maintain video for the public hearings and similar. And of course, to extend the lifespan of our server for use. The streaming replacement, we are actually using right now. This solution is now in place to stream directly to YouTube. And that is in place of the Town Hall streams so that we can save a bunch of money over the coming years. And also so that we can use and allow the streaming service for everything, not just to select board meetings alone. Closed pin bridge is on track for its still 2022 construction date with continued communications with BHB being the next steps. We do have a fee schedule review schedule that is on the planning board agenda for the next meeting. And we expect completion of that near the end of August. And that will be the schedules getting reviewed, also reviewed by the select board and a public hearing on it. You can ask the assistant town admin if you have more information that you'd like to know about that. For Salt Chat, we now have the access being built. And that access is expected to be completed by 2022, so at the end of the year. And our road agent will be handling that. I don't have any specific timeframes because it's going to vary based on how other road projects happen. But that is where we are currently at. Town Hall, we have done several upgrades. We are currently looking at the LED emergency lights to replace the failing emergency lights that we have. Those should be installed this month. We also have fire safety and handicap signs in progress right now. We are also going to be looking at security, the stairs and ramp and other external maintenance. And then after we've gone through that, the next step will be further ADA compliance. White Plains Bridge Road, we are waiting on the engineer. The expected completion is as soon as we can possibly do it. The engineer is meeting with the Butters and one of our select boards as a representative, Aunt U D, tomorrow to get sign easements from some of the Butters so that we can finally submit the application to the EBS. Town property sales, several have been completed and are now back on the tax list. That is ongoing. More of that will happen during this meeting. And so we will be putting properties up to bid and talking about the safe removal of some portions as well. Dear Matter Solar, which we now know as the Large Solar Project, that is awaiting the next update from Olive Wood, who are the solar company that is going forward with that. That expected end completion date is sometime 2023. Currently, the next steps are looking into pilot agreement and how that affects the town and whether it is considered a reasonable pilot agreement or not. And then the continuation of what we get next from Olive Wood, probably in a few months, would be more of a civil engineering style plan for the layout of where panels and access roads and stuff would go. I know that they are working on that with various folks, including contacting Emmett on that. So I don't have an exact timeframe for that, but that is coming in the near future. And if you want to know whatever the latest on that is, please attend the solar subcommittee meetings or ask the town administrator. The Wetlands Ordinance is currently in the planning board for review. That was actually voted on at the last planning board meeting. It is put through, but they have amendments that went in. And so they will be looking at that again at this meeting. That will, the process involved is approval of the planning board. And then that goes through a public hearing process that will be scheduled. And then it would go on to the voting portion of the ballot for the town in February. So the same time that you would be voting for, for example, me if I were running for select board, is when you would be voting on that. It is, as I have been told so far, it is not a town meeting agenda item or a town meeting warrant. It will actually be on the voting ballot prior to that. And you can ask the town admin or the assistant town admin for any further details. The latest drafts of that are always available on the website on the front page as well. Or link to from the front page or the planning board section. And last, the Concord Drive, that is in progress right now. Expected completion was before school. I don't know what that means now that they have no commissioners. But the water main and the road bed replacement were kind of the next steps. I believe they've got a temporary water main set aside for it now. Or at least that's what I heard. They were in the process of completing the last time that I got communication from them. So that's where we are. And normally, I would say, ask the Pillsbury Lake Village District Commissioners for the latest update on that. Since they don't have any, let's ask our town admin and/or he'll probably get in touch through our road agent to see where we are with that. And that's going to complete the town project status updates. Again, that will show up on our website in the near future, so you'll be able to see that. All right, that moves us into our appointments. And our first appointment is with Joyce Rose for timber tax bills. Is she here?
Yeah.
Please come on up and. Give your piece.
I submitted a letter.
That is turned on, so you're good. You're welcome to sit, stand, or whatever's most comfortable for you. Your board has sort of that's pointed at you. They don't know where it's located.
That's working.
Is this on?
Can't hate you.
You should make him stop here. There's another seat.
That's great.
You have the letter from Russell that you gave.
Oh.
Do I? Yeah.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. I saw it previously. I don't have a current copy in front of me, but that's okay. Oh, is it?
It's an email.
Yes.
All right. Regarding the Pearson and Wonderlet jobs, and this is coming from Joyce, I understand the report of wood cut was due by May 15th. Both jobs were cut between 3/27 and 3/31, which is the exact cutoff date for the 2021 tax year. Unfortunately, the processing and delivery of the wood to the different mills and receiving of slips from all mills took longer than expected as well as processing the paperwork for the landowners. This delay puts us beyond the 5/15 deadline for filing the report. If this situation were to happen again, I'd file an extension to make sure we did not miss the deadline. Please consider forgiving the dueage assessed to these landowners. Thank you, Joyce. Did you all get a chance to?
Yeah.
Please.
I would just say it's unusual to start a job on the 27th or 28th of March when the deadline is the 31st.
I don't think anybody can hear you.
I would just say.
Sorry. I hated myself, oh, let me.
I would just say it's unusual to start a job on the 27th or 28th of March when the deadline is 31st. And that's basically what happened is we started it at the end of March. The delivery of the wood was later. So that's just what happened. If it were to happen again, I would ask for an extension.
And just as a point of clarification to everybody, extensions are a normal part of paperwork that is often done. All right, board, do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Why couldn't you just hold off on this file for, because I'm, the 2021 year's ends in March, in March 1st. So if you just kind of put it on, then you wouldn't have any problems at all.
Right. Correct, but we had started, we had actually started it prior to that. And I should have just done an extension as opposed. We thought the paperwork, the delivery of the wood and the paperwork would, the time would be sufficient. So no excuses, but we didn't have a medical issue. We couldn't start on that time and everything just got a little late.
And you guys have been in business a long time.
Yeah.
Since you was a young kid. There you go. So has this ever happened to you before?
We're a very small company and when I go down, everything's down. Basically, it happened.
Well, and plus in this business, they don't have control over when they get their paperwork. And then weather always controls everything we do. So sometimes that, you know, you don't think, I'm only speaking on what my knowledge is of what she does and what we all do. It's, you know, it's not like they were hiring. The taxes are going to be paid, you know what I mean? Well, I think sometimes this paperwork is to make sure that the town gets their proper tax money. You know, I mean, granted, we should all follow the rules as best as possible. But yeah, like in the last select board meeting, I'm not, this is not. I don't feel like, I feel like there's, everybody has paperwork delays. Too bad we couldn't find the engineer on White Plains. But she owed a lot of money. So yeah, so I, I, yeah, I just, I see your point. And I think we're a small town and, and yeah, we want everybody to follow the rules for sure, but. Did you say you were sick, Joyce?
I had a medical issue, yeah. I have my ACL, so I'm still.
You did what?
My, my ACL.
Oh, your knee, oh, jeez.
So, yeah, but, you know, that's, that's the issue.
But like, this has never happened to you folks before?
No, it hasn't. No, we've never charged the double dueage.
No, I understand what they've done to charge the wish.
So my, my point that I made at the previous one and that I'll make here again with a little bit more comment is it's always important that we all get held accountable to what we're supposed to do. And of course, this is much like us citizens paying property taxes, which is just a part of what we're supposed to do. However, being a small town and knowing the way that our tax collector and our taxes work, if someone comes to us with a problem, we do our best as a town to accommodate that so that everything gets taken care of, town gets what they need, but it doesn't cause undue hardship on the people that need to pay those taxes either. So to me, it sounds like this is an extenuating circumstance that would make it make sense to not charge that dueage. What is the feeling of the rest of the board?
I think you're correct. And like I said at the last meeting, I didn't agree anyways, so, yeah.
All right, what is the proper motion?
We need a motion to abate both amounts.
So it's an abate law.
Okay.
So would you like to make that motion?
Sure.
All right, so to abate these amounts.
My motion to abate these amounts of the double dueage.
238.
33. And 1/27 of 5.
All right, I would second that motion. And I'm going to stick with roll call votes just because it's easier. Dave Hemingway, Chair, aye.
Ronald, aye.
Aye. All right, that was passed and.
Yeah, I'm all in.
Everything at the end, okay. Thank you very much.
You're coming.
All right, next up, in appointments. Kim for agricultural commission.
I'm going.
Yep. Just so everyone can hear you. I know that you can talk.
I, obviously, I got myself on the agenda tonight mainly because of the fact that in looking over our agricultural commissions, the last minutes were actually submitted from my understanding that were publicly available on the website in 2014. And I just wanted to know the status of that. Where is membership? Do we have members? If in fact we don't, I'd like supposedly start to get active and reestablish that commission with either new or renewed members, whatever the case may be. I know that I sat on the initial ag commission. I was not on the last mission at that point in time, although it's very important to me. And I just think that we need to reestablish it. I mean, we worked really, really hard getting into the town, at town meeting to get it even established. So I would just like to see it change even more.
Do you have a comment? I believe you were looking at some of the stuff for this.
I have.
Up there.
I have. Run down on it.
All right.
Board has the ability to establish that.
So this is how they get formed and what their charges are via the RSAs, which for anyone looking, agricultural commissions are enabled by RSA 674:44-E. So if you want to, well, and 67444, basically, several parts of it maybe is the initial establishment. I know that as far as I'm aware, we don't have a current commission or any numbers on the line, which would of course be why there are no minutes.
Absolutely.
So why did the first one, why did the last one dissipate? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Please don't, please don't misunderstand me and I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to be positive here and getting like reestablished, regoing here in our town. Although, if I may, I know if I may.
No, go right ahead.
J-Go just happened to be on the last working active commission. So she may be able to actually answer it. And I apologize, in fact, I'm putting you on the spot. That's not my intention.
Well, no, actually, if you could talk into your mic, that would make it even better so I know what you're saying about me.
Sorry, no, 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 no. I'm just saying that from my understanding, J-Go was in fact an active member on the last.
I was.
Working, working commission.
And secretary.
I'm sorry?
I was a secretary.
And, and it's all positive. We just want to kind of get it, or my intention is to get it back active and participating in our town. That's what my intention is. Because I know that they're advisory to a good many, not only to boards, but also to you in, in decision making. And to me, to me, it just matters. I'd like to see it active again. So I'm not, maybe Jay can answer as to why. Maybe it was participation, things got busy, I have no idea.
Would you care to comment on that? If so, we'll bring you a mic.
Say that again?
Would you care to comment on that? And if so, we'll bring you a mic.
I would love to see that committee, the commission reestablished. I think it would be a great thing. And just thanks, just a little, just a.
Personal point of clarification, wow.
My husband got very, very sick and I was unable to make a commitment to anything other than him. So that's kind of where it's trying to all fall apart. And if it got back on its feet, I'd like to be part of it again.
Thank you. I, I think it's just a matter of just bringing it together, making it public that, hey, we're looking. And I just want to say this, I do have a couple of interested people that would be willing to serve, just.
I guess my question for Jay, since you were there at the, the last noted one with minutes, do you know if they were expecting to continue meeting at that point? Or was it a lack of membership or just it kind of stopped since you and your husband weren't controlling it anymore?
It was a lack of membership. We had a hard time recruiting more people. We tried, we tried suing Emmett. We're, you know, integral, Marty Bender was a huge part of it. And you know, Marty is spread like peanut butter. So I think it was just a matter of always the same terms being picked and not enough people stepping forward. And it just kind of fell apart. And I, I know I had a big role because I'm a secretary as well. And I couldn't be there, so I don't really can, unfortunately.
Thank you very much. So my question to our town employees would be, maybe you know, maybe you don't. Can we just appoint people back to this for, because it's been inactive for so long? Do we have to recreate it?
I think that.
I shut it off.
We shall. What I would suggest that you do, since we don't know really how it ended, I would make a motion reestablishing the agricultural institution. And then if you wanted to make appointments from then on. But I think it would just show on the record nicely where it started is, we don't know what happened, really.
All right. It could have been purely circumstantial and that's just.
And yeah, I'm not saying, I'm good, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, as a point that has mentioned some people that are, that are here, at this point, I will actually open this up to public comment. If someone wants to comment, we do have a mic up here at the podium for you to do so. If you want to volunteer, if you want to be part of that, please tell, let us know. She already said, yes.
Just one quick comment. What is the purpose of the commission?
Okay, the question was what is the purpose of the commission? And I'm actually going to let Kim go ahead with this. While I try to find exactly what the RSA says as well.
If I'm correct, I believe that it was established in, through town warrant. We actually had to put it through a warrant article. And I believe that was in 2010. It was very active, the whole town was very, very responsive. And I believe criteria and duties, our advisory not to almost all of our commits, like our planning, all of our boards, our planning boards, our zoning board, our selectmen. Whereas primarily, we are in fact the agricultural designated area of concrete. Due numbers are code.
Thank you. And now that I've found it, I'll go ahead and read this section for you, which comes from RSA 674:44-F lists the following activities that agricultural commissions may and should undertake. Survey and inventory agricultural resources in the community. Conduct activities to recognize, promote, enhance, and encourage agriculture, agricultural resources, and agricultural-based economic opportunities. Assist the planning board in the development and review of sections of the master plan which address agricultural resources. Advise local agencies or boards in the review of requests on matters affecting agricultural resources. Coordinate activities with appropriate service organizations and nonprofit groups. Publicize and report its activities. Hire consultants and contractors as needed. Receive gifts of money to carry out its purpose. Hold meetings and hearings as necessary. So this is also pointed out as agricultural commissions are not regulatory, but rather are a serve in a review and advisory capacity. So if you want to think about it, this is much like the conservation commission, but for farms. Are there any further public comment or questions? All right, does the board have any comments or questions?
No, pretty much if. So would they, would they, let's say the planning board had something in front of them, then they would be asked to come in, even maybe even on this wetlands thing?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to try.
And in that advisory capacity, everything will be taken into consideration.
Right, right, kind of like. Right, right, kind of like that.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right, uh, so I would make a motion that we re-establish the agricultural commission as had been voted in at previous town meeting with, and accept. And accept, uh, let me look here. And accept, uh, possible appointees.
Volunteers. Let's go to. And it had six, you said they had six.
The, I believe the size can be between five and seven, plus alternates. Maybe it's between, anyway, it's, it's in the RSA.
Is that something where again, we would sit on one of us as a substitute?
Like with the, so it's not a board like the planning board?
Okay, perfect.
It would be more like the conservation commission.
Which don't think does that.
We could have an ex officio member for it, but we are not required.
Well, I'd second the motion for you, Dave.
All right, uh, so roll call vote, myself, aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
So if you can find people that, uh, want to be part of that, please, uh, send the appointments over to us. Uh, Michelle will have, uh, in the back, uh, our town clerk, she has all of the forms for filling out to be able to do that.
Okay. Um, would you prefer that like I, I come in with people who have shown positive interest and I give that to Michelle or submit them to you? Or I, I'll, I'll be more than happy to.
Yeah, so it's a form that will come in through Michelle, just like for any of the other commissions or boards, and then we'll basically approve those appointees.
Like at next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
If I may say, usually you appoint first and then the form is prepared and given to Michelle to square again.
Correct. Fair enough.
So we can keep away that great.
Um, just for my own clarification, shall I look at this as a progressive thing where I should get myself on the agenda or our commission should get on the agenda for next month as well? For approval for concerned candidates or bring candidates into the meeting? How would you like to do that?
I'm not trying to speak for the board, but I think if there, it's always handy for candidates to come in and talk to the board directly, especially if they're unfamiliar with who they are. Um, and you can always call me and I'll help you either way.
Absolutely, yep. But I mean, is, is, would that be getting on the agenda so that?
Yeah.
For next month, okay. Thank you very much.
Good question. To get some candidates, to get it out, um, and about, can you put something?
Sorry?
I, I don't need, I'm vel- uh, can you put? Can you put something in the grapevine stating that this agricultural committee has been started up again? Because the grapevine will come out before the first meeting in, oh, in August.
Our next, our next selectman meeting?
Right, well, the next, yeah.
Does that sound like it will be, is that happening?
Sure.
Okay.
We, we, yeah, so, uh, point of clarification that that would be before the next, uh, the next department head meeting?
Yes.
But not before the next select board meeting?
Correct, the first one of August.
Yeah.
Right.
So, um, we would not have to wait until a department head meeting in order to do those appointments. So the next select board meeting in two weeks would also be possible.
Right, I just figured if she doesn't have any people putting their hands up, just to get it out in the public.
Absolutely.
To, you know, put it in the grapevine and get it on the front, hey, that's you.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And, and let, let me just be fair, um, recognizing that there are certain individuals that were on that last minute, uh, absolutely, I want their consideration to come back. And in some ways, if in fact it was a mere circumstantial reason as to why it fell apart, they in fact should have first priority in my mind. I mean, that's just me, I'm not here to say that. I mean, their names are all out here, they too should be considered in my mind. I'm just saying that, I just want to see if it should be established and active.
We would also need to figure out terms, and I don't know if the RSA, I don't recall what it says in terms.
Going back to our town meeting, that was all proposed. That was all established.
So if I look back on twenty ten, I could tell.
Correct, absolutely, I mean, you should in fact be able to.
Okay, we need to stay where people, so we don't appointing everyone the same year.
Absolutely, and that's exactly what it was, and I believe it was two alternate all ways, the report on there. Um, but that whole proposal and, um, the criteria for the whole commission was in fact submitted for, for Webster's criteria. And that should in fact very much still be available. If it's not, I'm sure that I could get it.
But well, I'll ask you.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, next on our agenda was Lewis, but I believe he needs requested to wait until seven thirty.
It's fine, I'm here.
Oh, it, yeah. So, uh, please, come on up, floor is yours. I'm here to speak about Battle Street traffic.
Uh, basically, I have a couple of issues with the speed on one twenty seven, Battle Street, and in particular, some of the sections where sight is limited and particularly near Roe v. Road, the hill on both ends of Roe v. Road. I'm also concerned about the number of burnouts throughout the town. I'll take the speed first. Uh, talking to the chief, it seems that the average speed limit is set at forty. Some of the sections where there are curves, it's thirty to thirty-five. And to get any of the signs adjusted has to go through the selectmen, the selectmen have to, uh, request it from DOT. So that's one of the main reasons up here. I think because of where Roe v. Road is, and the two hills that fall into Roe v. Road, that the speed limit should be considered to be less than forty. Thirty-five or thirty. Uh, second issue is, in talking to the police chief, they give a lot of warnings, uh, just to base something. Uh, in April through May, this was in the Webster grapevine, there were a hundred and seventy incidents. There was a hundred and ten motor vehicle incidents. Out of that a hundred and ten motor vehicle warnings, there were nine summons or nine tickets, nine out of a hundred and ten. Personally, I don't think it's enough. I think that is one of the problems. People driving that road have come to assume I can go, put into the chief, at least ten miles an hour over the speed limit and not worry about getting a ticket. For all creatures of paddle. I think the speed limit in that area or possibly other areas need to be reduced. I think the number of warnings should be cut back and more tickets given. Even though the reasoning that I was told was that if it's under thirteen miles an hour, the judge will throw it out. Even if the judge throws it out, it's a waste of time and maybe the individuals who are, if they're repeat offenders, will get tired wasting their time and slow down. And it's not just local traffic, although local traffic, you can tell when they're coming through. There's a lot of tractor trailers, there's a lot of log trucks, there's a lot of logging trucks, there's a lot of cordwood trucks, there's a lot of passenger vehicles well over the forty miles an hour on a continued basis. So I have a couple of suggestions. I think, um, in talking to the chief, he said that we are pat owners of the speed trailer that flashes how many miles you're going. I think that should be used more frequently in areas. I think for the Roe v. Road situation, there should be some signs that say hidden road or caution, turning traffic, because if there is a car stop heading north and a tractor trailer or a truck going forty or fifty or fifty-five, they cannot stop before they hit the car or hit the vehicle. I think there should be a sign that says radar enforced, strictly enforced, all to just to bring the attention that it's a dangerous intersection. And it's a, it's a thruway. Even though it's labeled a scenic byway, it's a thruway for a lot of vehicles. And noting that in a couple of years, um, the bridge at Davisville is going to be completely closed when they replace it. Traffic to get to Webster's is going to have to go through Deer Meadow, Tyler Road, close Pender's Road each. So I think getting a handle on people thinking that they need to slow down would be good. Second issue is the number of burnouts in town. I don't know about you, but I sometimes wonder what's happened. It's like, it's contagious. Once you see it, someone else thinks I can make a longer one, or I can make a wider one, or I can drive more off the, off the side of the road. I mean, I had scheduled this before, the little incident in front of my store or on Roe v. Road. As far as I know, they caught the person, but, I mean. I have suggested people who are doing it, and all I get is that we have to see it. I don't believe that. I don't know what happened to that day that we could kind of prevent it from happening by knocking on the person's door, that everyone knows who it is, the police know who is doing some of them, and knock on the door and say, hey, we're getting complaints, you're going to lose your license after so many tickets of reckless driving. The incident the other day in front on one twenty seven, almost took out a car, almost took out my sign, it almost took the car coming down the hill, and that was at ten o'clock Friday night. And apparently he made, uh, this individual did, did it in other places in town in, in The third issue is that I was told I have a taget on my back because I've been complaining about these issues to the police. I don't mind having a taget on my back, I just want the thing solved. There are certain individuals that are doing this, the speed right past my entrance on And I don't think it's my point of purpose to knock on the door and say something about So number one issue is hopefully that the select board will decide on what kind of sign with the police chief, uh, and request some more signage in certain areas of one twenty seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so before I go ahead and have the board talk about this, I'd like to allow the police chief to come up since, uh, he and the department in the way that, uh, things are handled as mentioned, and please come up and speak to the various items.
So the quick and easy one is the, uh, speed trailer. We do own a speed trailer that's owned by three towns. Um, they are, right now, over twenty thousand dollars for a speed trailer, so there's no way we're going to afford our own. Our speed trailer has an issue with it right now, it's being repaid next week, and we should have it running. I told Mr. Ganges that I would have it up in front of his place, we would put it right next to his sign for God's sakes. And I've been sitting there running radar almost every day that I work and having the other patrolman running radar. So motor vehicles.
Which towns do we own that with?
Boscombe and Warner. And it says right on the sign, three towns. So for motor vehicle stops, we have, um, forty-six stops on Battle Street alone in the last month out of, uh, seventy-two motor vehicle stops. So far this year, from January to the end of June, three hundred and twenty-nine stops on Battle Street with fines totaling two thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty cents. So we are issuing tickets, but they're not all for speed. I mean, there's failing user directionals, there's unexpected, so not everybody is a speed, even though quite a few of the ones we have on Battle Street are on speed related. And you stop a car, it has only to get the order out, you're going over the speed limit, you need to slow down. It's not always at a high speed, we may stop them at ten, twelve miles an hour over the speed limit and say, Clark, you've just got to slow it down. So they have an idea that they're being watched, the cruisers are out there, um, so they have an understanding of what's going on. The rubber lines absolutely aren't giving anything to have somebody see who's pulling the stunts. And it's not our town, it's, if you look at any of the streets in the surrounding towns, every town around us has the same problems. Mr. Ganges was a red GMC pickup truck, and we just happen to have some issued for a red GMC pickup truck. Whether it's the same one, I can't positively say, but this is a possibility, it was the same truck. But there's a number of different kids doing burnouts, and almost all of them are pickup trucks. They seem to be able to hang on to that front brake and just let it go and, the last two that we caught was only because of motor vehicle accidents. They spun one off the road, hit something, and that's how we caught them. Cause they know, went on here twenty-four hours a day. Or they see the cruiser go by, now's the time to go back to the other end of town because we know where the cruiser's going, uh, or the town, or it's sitting at the police station. We do what we can with the limited resources that we have. Signage on one twenty seven, you have to, that's DOT is the one that can do the signs on one twenty seven. If you look, there is a school bus stop sign on that, you would think that would be the first name that would slow people down, but sitting in front of Mr. Ganges' house usually in the mornings. Average speed coming down of that hill is forty to forty-five miles an hour coming down of that hill. Occasionally you hit the one that's fifty, fifty-five, I wrote two tickets last week that were sixty-one going down over the hill. There's no way, especially if you're driving a tractor trailer and it's loaded, that if you start at the top of the hill at thirty-five miles an hour, unless you get your foot right on that brake, you're going to be doing fifty by the time you hit the bottom because it's so steep. That's the high part. And even with a, a normal car, if I drive my cruiser down there at forty miles an hour, take my foot off the gas at the top of the hill in either direction, I'm doing fifty by the time I hit the bottom. So you gotta, they just have to be aware, ride their brakes all the way. And a lot of people will just take the foot off the gas and coast down, throw it up over the hill and go back. So his is like a, a high speed area, right in that dip, which is actually a dangerous section because of the intersection there. You can't see if you're coming out of that road, you got a short distance. So we'll do whatever we can.
One question, if someone called the police because there was, there was noise after hours?
If someone called the police because of noise, the police don't have to see the noise, what is their policy? So yet, what you're referring to is if somebody calls and says they had a burnout in front of my house.
No, not, not a car, just say noise.
Any, any noise?
Yeah.
They're gonna go to wherever the noise is.
Okay, thank you. You're gonna go to that?
You're gonna go to that home. That's all I'm looking for. If I call and say so-and-so just flew past my entrance to the store or home, I don't think I need to hear, we have to catch them. Cause you just said you go to the house if you've got a request or a notice that there was noise, abundant noise. That's all I'm hoping could happen with some of the situations in town. Go and.
Go and talk to the individual.
So I'd like to point out one thing that's different in that instance and there's, if it's a complaint that a house is like having a house party and is too loud, obviously that's the location of the noise. If it's a car's driving down the street too loud or sitting on the corner too loud, the police can come out to that corner, but if the noise isn't still happening at that place, there's not much they can do about it. So that's why it's a little bit different for the burnout versus the noise.
I, I'm talking very specifically with situations in front of my store. Almost on a daily basis, there are a couple of individuals who come flying off of 127 and then gun it. So they're going at least sixty past my byway, up Roby Road.
Are you talking coming out Roby Road and then going up the hill?
No, coming into Roby Road.
So they come down the hill to about sixty and make that corner?
Corner. And a lot of people make, make the corner because they're afraid to stop because they don't know what's behind you. So they make it, basically the speed they were, uh, were going on 127 and then certain individuals flirt, just turn past and aggravate the situation.
Chief Adams, has there been, what have there been for accidents in that area?
There hasn't been many accidents in that area, only because most of the people in town residents, they know that's a dangerous intersection and it's hard to see, you just can't. Usually the accidents happen from somebody coming down 127 and doesn't see the person pull out. And the person pulls out, pulls out at a normal speed and starts over the hill at a slow rate and next thing you know, you're right on the back of them. We haven't had any major motor vehicle accidents yet, not that I'm aware of.
Well, I know it wasn't supposed to be that reason, but you know, you're talking about any place on roads, there's places that are dangerous and you know, people pulling out of their driveways on corners and you know what I mean? So that's why I was wondering if there had been recent accidents reported or you know, somebody reported that they, I know lose seen stuff, I'm just saying, other motor vehicle operators that have called your office and said, um, you know, this guy just pulled out in front of me or this just happened, I didn't know.
And we get that all the time. State law says I can't issue a ticket to somebody that I didn't personally see do the violation or have a written complaint that that person's willing to go into court and testify. But if I write you a ticket for your speed, that somebody else has got to go in and testify saying, hi, he was doing this fast. The problem I have is you're going to get into court and say, he was doing sixty when I found my house. Unless you've got a radar gun there, there's no way any judge in the world is going to accept that because I can visually tell how fast they went.
But you do get quite a few complaints up from different people.
Oh, all the time, all the time. And it's on one, I mean-
In mainly the night area?
It's all the Battle Street. It's, it's all over the roads.
I'm trying to, yeah.
Um, well, we just wrote a ticket for eighty-three miles an hour in front of John Clark's house. So said, been seventeen-year-old kid. So most of them are young ones. But then you get the, the commuter that's on his way to work and he's thinking about work or he's doing everything but paying attention to the speed because I'm guilty of it too. And next thing you know, you're doing twenty miles an hour with the speed limit. As long as that's an occasional thing and you realize it, then hopefully you'll put a stop to it, but hopefully we're not standing there because you will pick it.
But if you get somebody that knows somebody doing it, can you go to somebody's house and just say, we've heard this and maybe you should cut it out?
The resident city he's talking about, we've summons somebody that lives there for speed, so they know that we're watching them. We had that conversation.
Oh, okay.
Um, but again, they know that we're out there and they're not fools. They know exactly where we are most of the time.
So a question for you. Uh, I remember probably just before the pandemic, we started having all of the rubber marks all over the roads and getting, um, game cameras and other things. Have, have we had any luck with any of those or is there something better that we should be trying with similar to be able to capture some of this?
Game cameras work great until nighttime. And we got on film a number of burnouts. The problem is at night, those game cameras shoot in black and white and if the guy's got his brake lights on, it gets so bright you can't read the license plate and it's hard to distinguish. Had to put a game camera close enough to the road to you get a good positive ID. If we get a license plate, at the worst case scenario, we can contact motor vehicle and say, this is the vehicle that did it. They'll yank the plates off the vehicle, um, which hurts as much as now that you don't have a vehicle to drive. But game cameras work great during the daytime. We've got good pictures during the day, but not that good at night.
So I know one of the things that's commonly done on say a highway is they'll have a distance keeper line and then be able to record it with video. Would that be good enough evidence for you to actually submit something without being there or not?
I, I think for the equipment to do that, it's going to be expensive. Most of the lines that you see painted on the roads, that's for the airplane, for the aircraft because he'll use a stopwatch. And they've accepted that because these guys do it, that's what they do every day. But it's hard for us to, I don't know how we'd simulate a stopwatch and cut better off of the radar gun. Now I got an absolute positive speed. Can I answer any questions? Anybody have questions that I can answer?
Do we have any public comment on this? Please step on up and go to the mic.
No, I have already gone, so I can't. I'm talking from a mail carrier point of view and the new, the new vehicles don't have rear windows, they're, they're now owned by the post office, big vans. But when I was for years delivering that route, starting at the top, going towards Kentucky, you got Roby Road down the bottom. If I was making a right turn onto Roby Road, I'd have people come flying behind me when I'm coming out. You know, it, it doesn't take very long for a car to be at the top of the hill and then boom. Now, the distance also goes all the way to Tanner and McCormick over on that other. So it's a, it's an elongated S-turn. Same thing there, I've almost been smashed by a tractor trailer coming each way at the same time. That's why we moved Fox's in, but that area, if you're going to make it slower, you need to include that other, that other turn over by Tanner's corner. It's, it's dangerous.
The top section I think is all rating mark down to thirty for caution, correct?
Coming from, um, Lockington and that way, yes. I don't recall if there's a, I don't think there's a sign going towards Lockington other than forty zone.
How long is that thirty mile with around that corner?
Good four.
How many feet?
Until you see the next sign. I'm not exactly how far till the next sign.
Okay.
So are there some orange or yellow signs or it's a suggestion now?
It's a suggestion?
The orange or yellow ones are suggestions.
Then they're suggesting, the state is suggesting them from Tanner's corner, if you want to call it that, McCormick. There's no other sign that says forty until almost the campground. So everybody here, everybody, cause I looked at it the other day and I said, ooh, thirty miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour, everybody's going over the speed limit. Cause I drove past that to see when the next sign is and the next sign is forty by the campground.
So who gets signs? How do, how does the town get signs since the D-
DOT.
DOT, they have to ask for it?
Yeah, Kevin has gotten a sign before, but I think this would have to come from the board.
They have to. Each, each road is dedicated a speed limit. When they did 127-
Can we get into the mic, please?
Well, I, I've always been told that's too loud. When they did 127 back in the eighties, they built that road to fifty, fifty-five miles an hour and then they backed it back to forty. That road's built for fifty miles an hour and it's hard not to go fifty in, then thirty-five mile an hour signs, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but when they're yellow and you're still going forty, that's just a suggestion, that's what-
That's right.
They, you can't get a ticket. But they're just there for a warning, you should slow down a little bit. But the, you have to go to, to the state and make a request and then they do a study. It, it's quite a process. And then if you're going to do all this, you need to hire that van, two more people and another cruiser because a sign anywhere, Fashion Hall Road or anywhere in town, is only as good as, as keeping an eye on it. You can track every road with all the signs in the world, but if you can't enforce that, you've wasted your money and, and stuff. I, I'd like to see that back to fifty, fifty-five miles an hour for man, man delivered.
Um, so a question, we got this, there's a speed question and the state, state studies, et cetera, which we have to pay for for them to do that in most of our group. Um, the other comment though, which makes a lot of sense to me is things like the caution to any vehicles and making sure that there's the good yellow warning signs for there's a road off to the side here. So at least no one is, obviously locals know, but at least no one that's kind of just traveling the road is going to be surprised by the road. Is there a different, can you just request that from DOT or is there a process?
I think as a process you have to submit it formally to DOT because they have to
Other comment from the board?
Well, I guess all I would do is I think it would be nice to have the, just to remind people how fast they're going, none of the facts.
The trailer with the now, right?
First morning you were there, my husband's like, well, why didn't you tell me you talked about that? I said, I didn't see it. No, he's, you know, you are, you're going to work, he's, you know, I-
Well, he's seen me because I've seen the trucks go down that side.
I know, freaked him out. But anyway, so, so your presence I think is fantastic. I think one of those signs to allow, but I'm a little bit with them on the fact that, you know, yes, safety is important, but there's lots of parts of this road that, that, you know, and I understand where Lou's coming from, but you know, it's just, I, I had a son that lost his license and we did thirty-five a lot of places and that takes a long time to get places. And I never realized it until you have to do it. I used to say, let me drive. No, we never get that. No, but it's important for people to remind them that, yeah, you're coming to that hill and you're not paying attention coasting.
Tyler Road's forty miles an hour, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And so another thing that, um, would seem reasonable to me based on, on the comments of people are going really fast around the corner and then continuing to gun it. Well, I find it hard that someone would be able to make that corner at sixty miles an hour. It would be reasonable to me to suggest that maybe if you were a little bit down Roby Road and so that you would catch them doing that acceleration up, uh, off of the main road, that would be a reasonable place to sit for a little while as well.
I was sat on Roby Road, had the other officer sit on Roby since Mr. Gant gave us the complaint. We've sat up the road, see, can't quite see it until you pass his driveway. You'll see us at the top of the hill if you're looking, but it looks like there's a car coming at you. We haven't got anybody yet. I know who he's, who he's talking about and that's the vehicles we've been looking
Can I make a little comment?
Please.
With this idea of notifying individuals that, you know, kind of go a little slower, I think like in this month's issue of the gray line, there's a police department monthly report and kind of suggesting things. It would be nice to see, like they have reminders for, uh, owners of dogs to come in and get your license for the dog. It might be nice to see reminder, watch the speed limit, careful on turns, et cetera.
That's all, fine, I'm doing it.
We'll add that into next one.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, do we have any further comments on this topic? All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next appointment, that would be Pearson and Gunnigle on transparency. Please come on up. Let us know what you make.
I'm getting older.
Your arms got shorter.
As a reminder, we will let them make their presentation and then we will have
Got a little paperwork I'd like to give the, your selectmen first. Just in case you don't have any in front of you, if you don't know what it is, I have a copy of each, for each one of you, the offer of office, what it means and what it takes to relieve a person of offer of office. And I have the town policy of fraud policy. This is the town policy. I don't know if you've ever read it, but you need to read it because I honestly believe there's been several people have broke that fraud policy and you do need to read it. I am one of the per people that have filed a complaint against a town treasurer. I have been to Franklin District Court to find the charges filed against him. He has been arrested. I'm hoping you guys follow with me. I'm not very good at kind of putting my stuff together, but I'll get there. Transparency for Webster Town officials. I would like to discuss the land transactions between the town officials and Bruce Johnson. The rest took place on June sixteenth. I was told from the clerk, Mr. Johnson was charged with two charges. Public officials bade from certain private dealings. Case number four-three-seven-two-oh-two-one-C-R-seven-three-three. Court date for arraignment, July twenty-sixth. Maybe the chief can clarify what exact charges are. Was there admission of guilt to any of the charges? Maybe he can answer this. I, I really don't know if, if Mr. Johnson had admitted to any of these guilt charges at all. Do you know if he had admitted to anything, chief?
The problem we have, John, is he can admit to anything he wants, anybody can, but until he goes into court and makes the plea, either guilty, not guilty, or nolo, that's the only time that the admission is actually taken into consideration.
All righty.
Since we didn't have the mic, the, the point was that only the court plea on the court date is considered being valid and that has not happened yet.
Let me see where I go from here. I have a- I have a copy of the state of the oath of office rules. It seems he and others have broke the oath a few times. And as it reads, CPAC two, Article eighty-four of the Constitution of the State of the Hampshire. And as any such person who violates said oath of office, take the same, shall be forthwith dismissed from office or position involved. That is what the oath reads. In my opinion, he broke the oath of office and he broke the fraud policy. And that is my opinion, he should be removed from office. This is my opinion. The policies of importance are the selling of the town owned properties policy. He wrote them. He actually wrote these policies knowingly, these policies, and he still wrote them.
He also wrote in, was the chair signing the fraud policy?
Yes, he actually wrote that fraud policy. The town fraud policy, the board needs to review these policies because Mr. Johnson and the town officials involved in the transactions brazenly wrote so many sections in this policy and hid it in non-public sessions from the town. Going forward, the board of selectmen need to be further familiar with and obey all town policies. Make sure to follow them and be transparent at all times with them. Has Mr. Johnson been using any town funds, including the town attorney, involving this investigation and cases?
Any funds for the legal attorney, etc.?
Yes.
Would have to come through the select board and/or Dana. And Dana, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the town has had nothing to do with defending Bruce.
Correct, that's correct.
It would be fair to say that the town has asked the town's attorney advice on how the town should handle itself, but not in any way, shape, or form related to defending or helping Bruce in his case.
I think that is the best way to deal with it. Is the board of selectmen going to, going to the court? And do you have a recourse to return these laws back to the town of Webster and a financial penalty of losing the amount paid for the land and the taxes paid plus some? Do you intend to get the land back and with him losing the money paid into this? Because the money he paid for this does not match the tax stand. So either somebody either lied to DRA, I mean, so registry deeds on how much they paid for this property or we were not told the correct amount or what he did pay for. The money was not... The town never reported this income to DRA.
So we wouldn't have had income reported to the DRA from the transaction. How exactly that would be reported, I'm not sure. Unfortunately, I was not on the board at the time.
It has to be reported.
But it would have been reported in, as part of the budget at the time. The, but wouldn't necessarily show up as, say, the Bruce Johnson land sale. It might show up in a line of, these are revenues from sales. And it might just be lumped in that way as far as a DRA submission reform. Regarding your other question of getting back the property, I'll quote you actually from the fraud policy that you mentioned, the very last line. In all cases involving monetary losses to the town, the town will pursue recovery of losses. There may be options available to the town to do so, but none of them would be possible until a legal conviction.
Okay. Would it be a conviction or after he goes to his, it would be after he goes to the hearing and then he, however he pleads, then if there's a court case, then it would be?
Well, what he pleads is not the important part, but what the court determines. If the court determines he guilty, then at that point, possibilities open up for legal recourse.
But Chief Adams, that hearing is just him pleading, right?
Guilty and no guilty.
He can end it, he can end it right then and there by pleading guilty or no law, but the conviction rate will, won't happen until that plea is entered.
And then if somebody pleads no law, they still will give some kind of conviction?
The court will have a finding of guilty on a no law plea.
So does that, that does not take out the, you know, fraud policy, right?
No, so basically, a no law plea means I'm not saying that I'm guilty, but I will accept the findings of the court and the court always does a finding of guilty on that.
There's another mic down there.
In my opinion, you selectmen can still file charges on Mr. Johnson on the fraud policy yourself and break in the oath of office. You can file that on these by yourself and I believe you should. As a separate charge, and I believe you as selectman should file this charge against him. A fraud policy and break in the oath of office. And I believe this court of selectmen needs to file these two charges against him. It's a whole separate charge. And I have a full case of every policy. This, this goes back almost to, I don't remember the exact year, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, of every policy that he has broken. From voting in a board of selectmen's office, regular meeting, when he voted not to sell this piece of land. It was given to conservation. Nancy Schofield, Mike Borack, and Bruce Johnson voted in a selectman meeting not to sell it. He knew what he was doing. Soon as he gets up a selectman's office, selectman, as a selectman, he comes right into that go up, close session meeting, buys that under the table. He knew what he was doing. He broke so many policies. That's where he broke the fraud policy. And I'm more than willing to give you every selectman meeting, all the way back until like two thousand sixteen, I've got a breaking order. And I'm willing to be work with the town transparency for you guys. You guys don't know any of this. And a lot of these policies are gone. Because the records have disappeared. Why did they disappear? Why was a lot of this stuff shredded? This is why I brought it up at town meeting this spring. Why did the records get shredded? It's all tied together, folks.
Wendy, is it possible to see where the money went when he gave, when he paid the seven thousand?
I have to know when that was purchased, which even though it was in non-public and the money was flowed through sale of town property. So I can try and trace back where the money hit the town.
That's where it is. Does it seem funny that the treasurer handles his own money?
That's a counter.
So that actually goes through the finance department and they handle all the bookkeeping for it. Treasurer is the one that's making sure that the number that he gets from them matches what's in the bank and signing the check.
When we did a ninety-one day to find out where that seven thousand dollars went, they couldn't find it. Eventually they said, well, they had to go into general fund somewhere. Well, where? How? Just the general fund.
So there should be a line and I remember that that came in before that right to now.
Yeah, I thought I had found the seven thousand and I probably have it in my files, so I'll look it up and get it to you, John. It went into sale of town property and went into the general fund and I don't remember the date, but.
All sale of town property goes into generic revenue.
But my big thing, I guess, is I really want to work with transparency and I think it's time that voters in this town is aware of all the good things that happen in this town, but we need to know the bad as well as the good. And we need to be able to vote for you folks that are at this table and be able not to vote for some people. But be able not to vote for somebody, we gotta know what they've done. And to reelect somebody, we gotta know what they had done to be able to reelect them. And if we can't be transparent out there with the good and the bad. And that's what I really want to do, is just to be transparent out there. And we're not trying to be vicious and vindictive. Not at all. And I just think it's time that we really open up this end of worms and get to the bottom of it and hopefully we can start all over. And get this town back together where it should be.
So on that note, I would like to say, first off, thank you for bringing up the transparency issues. Second, this board, especially myself to start with before these members stepped in, but also this board as well, has been fully supportive of us doing everything we possibly can to not only be transparent, but to make it easier to find and access all of that information. One of those is of course streaming and the new streaming policy that we've enacted, there are all boards, commissions, etc. that must serve public notice of a meeting. Will be streamed or recorded and then further uploaded to our YouTube account. We have requested getting back together and put in place the records retention committee, which hopefully we will have a meeting for soon. And they will be the ones that should and will determine how long various types of records must be kept for and may be kept for and continue that in transparency so that nothing disappears that's not supposed to. So we are absolutely working towards doing that. We've already enacted and signed policies to do that. So we are fully with you on wanting to be as transparent as possible. It's not possible for us to go back and make something in history transparent for what they did or didn't do, other than, yes, there was a sealed meeting, no, it was not public. We unsealed it and made it so that the notes for that could be read, which you've seen that, that's where the, I believe, the seven thousand number came from because that's where it was mentioned in those non-public previously sealed minutes. We've actually got a date coming up set up so that we can look at sealed minutes for the past three to five or seven years and unseal any that do not require staying sealed for whether it might be a personal interaction for an employee or an employee type situation where it would need to be, remain sealed for HR purposes. But anything that doesn't fall under those sorts of reasons, we expect will be unsealing. So we are absolutely looking forward to trying to be as transparent as possible.
You know, I want to make one more comment and I'll be done. I mean, ninety-nine percent of you folks on this board, ain't a lot of us out here, we're not attorneys. We're gonna make mistakes. And I ain't gonna hold anybody accountable for the mistakes, as long as they're honest to us. And, you know, we come forward and we admit it, hey, I've made a lot of mistakes in my life. I voted for some selectmen I personally did not like, but I voted for them. So I thought they'd be honest and do what was right for the town. I voted for some others I did like, I wished I didn't. And, you know, and that's the way it is. Made a mistake by voting for people I liked. The ones I didn't like, would have been a job.
Thank you, I think.
It goes both ways. It goes both ways.
Absolutely.
So I'm not holding anybody accountable for making mistakes, as long as they're honest to us.
Yeah, and we're trying to capture all of that to make sure that it will always...
So I'm not looking to pin you against the wall. We all make mistakes. And that's not my share. Thank you, folks.
Thank you for coming and presenting.
Yeah, I'll be part two.
Okay.
Won't be dragged out as long as he was. But the first thing I want to say is, Dana, if you, I, this is my, the book of the complaint. We've got everything. I've got the seven thousand dollar information right here, the check number and a couple things, and I do have questions about them, but I will be glad to come in tomorrow and you can make copies or write down everything that I've got. I mean, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a big book, but it's got everything from A to Z in an in order, in year order and everything else. So I do want to say, this board is a really good board. We've got new blood on and we've got Dee who has experience and she knows the town inside now. So we've got a really good board. And the problem is you're gonna have to be doing a lot of cleanup from, you know, things got a little out of hand. For years, we've been talking about transparency in town, but it runs both ways. It runs from the officials in the town and it runs with the people. So we have to work, we have to work together. We elect or appoint our town officials because we believe that we can trust them to run the town's business on a daily basis. We trust them also to write policies that are beneficial to the town and to, and that the selectmen can become familiar with the policies as soon as they, they are elected. No disrespect at all, but when we had brought this situation up in October and November, Mrs. Shadler had no clue that we had a selling of town properties or a fraud policy. We started with the selling of town properties, which is the first one that we found that was definitely broken. So it's very important for, to be educated, especially about town policies. And I know most people are, so anyway.
Just before you go, I just want to, I just, before you continue, I want to add in that we're actually gonna be talking about that later on in this meeting as well, under policy review session for new business.
Okay. Because I know the policies are good, they're not that old, but as time goes by, things change and you have to, but at least know that those policies exist, you know, that we have, not just a personnel policy or something or, you know, sexual harassment policy, but there are other policies that run in town. And that was one of the problems and John mentioned in that two to three of the participants in that transaction with the selling of those properties, they claimed to have not known about the policies and even though it was co-written by one or two of them. Transparency means town business is conducted in public and not private. Like John said, if you're gonna sell property and you're gonna probably sell some tonight, you gotta do it in the public. It's a public thing, nothing should be done in private. When you're selling a piece of town property, there's a way to do it. You don't just have, the minutes say that somebody came in, offered some money, they said, "Okay, let's do it," went into private session and sold it. I asked at the meeting beforehand, did anybody contact the others? And I just got shoulders rubbed. So I don't know, and I put in ninety-one As with Dana and the ninety-one As which I've got in here and his responses, I cannot find anything in any files anywhere. There's nothing anywhere. So anyway, basically I want to say, we all need to work together, everybody. Great new board, we've got great people in town, new people in town getting involved. Dave, your prime example. So if we all work together to ensure that the, a good future for the town of Webster... So if we all work together to ensure that the, a good future for the town of Webster with our government and townspeople working hand in hand to benefit our town, it's going to be a good thing. Let's make it the last time that something like this happens. We can obey the local and state laws, do our homework and be educated. Thank you for putting the time in that you all put in. Thank you for your, Dee, you've done it many times now. But thank you all. We've got a really good crew in our office. And this was not a malicious thing. This is called cleanup. I did not do this alone. I had help, but we did our homework and I won't give you anything that I don't have on paper. So I just want to make that clear and that's, that's what happened in this situation. So I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. I know I've sat a bit doing this, so I want to make sure that the other board members get to speak here as well.
What did Dee said? We don't want... You know, I didn't, I didn't do this to hide me, too. Really, you know?
All right, thank you. With that, typically I do also open up for public comment, so if we have any public that would like to comment on this topic before we move on to the next one, please do so.
Just, yeah, just grab a mic.
So I have a question. Whereas in, in that testimony that John just gave, he just asked you as a board if you'd be considering two more charges in regards to local office and fraud policy? And I guess my question is, yes, in fact to you, but also to our chief, what, what would that be?
That's not a criminal charge. The Police Department can pursue.
I mean, this is all pretty shocking to me when I'm just like writing down as fast as I can.
That's a good question.
So I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, I don't know that we know the answer.
No, it's an attorney, it's an attorney question.
It is, it is an attorney question in some ways. All John has asked you is to act on...
Policies.
Not only the policies, but also on townspeople's behalf and put additionally two more charges. So I guess, not necessarily asking you to help me understand from a law enforcement point of view, what would that be if they're, like if they're not criminal. Can you explain those to me? What would that entail for the consequences?
So that's not a criminal charge per se through the Police Department. And I've made the suggestion, actually I talked to John today, about the only place that case can be brought forward would be the Office of Public Integrity out of the Attorney General's Office.
Okay.
They have a specific office just for that and if it's going to be pursued, that's the people who have to take it from there.
And something comes from us saying the previous board member wrote these policies.
It's an office of public integrity that takes care of it.
So it would be initiated by our selectmen?
They would have to request the Attorney General's Office to look into it and then, I think we have all the documentation for everything.
But wouldn't it be like, wouldn't they have to go to court first if he's found guilty and then we could... Because aren't people innocent until they're proven guilty, I guess?
You can still bring this forward with all the documentation, bring it forward and they do their own investigation. Even if he were completely guilty, the only thing they would, they wouldn't take that guilty consideration into it. They would look into the other accounts and they have plenty of documentation for everything.
So more or less, because he had, or these policies are written and...
Knowingly changed.
And it looks to us, or I'm not going to speak for you, but looks that says he wrote these policies, then what we do is we say, if that's what we agreed to do, it goes in and then they do the investigation.
Right.
And that can happen before his...
And can happen anytime, anytime at all.
And that doesn't cost the town any money?
Nope.
I see Tara already speaking.
I think I can clarify a little bit what the chief and John were talking about. The charges right now are public officials barred from certain private dealings and that's a state...
Statute.
Statute. It's Section 95, colon, 1. And so that's, those are the charges right now. But the others that were broken were town policies, the sale of town property and the fraud policy. So those are the ones that you as a select board, correct me if I'm wrong, would be taking care of those two policies.
Correct.
And...
Breaking the local office.
Yeah, because it, and the local office, but the selling of properties. Properties shall be offered by the town as is where is with all fault, with no representation as to the quality of the title being conveyed. Just to let you folks know, the deed, this says, we do not ever get warranty deeds. The deed was warranty deed three or four times in the deed. It's a total warranty deed. That's illegal. It was signed illegally by Leslie Palmer twice. She signed as a witness and signed as the notary public. Can't do that. And she could lose her notary license for that. But the whole thing was just a surface. It was just, and that's because it was sent quickly behind closed doors. If haven't done legally, no problem, no problem whatsoever. But, so that clarifies that the Franklin District Court takes care of one and then it comes back to the selectmen with the, with the town's policies.
We have all the policies in our record.
So just to clarify, thank you very much, John. Thank you, Chief. Are you, as a board, are you going to consider an investigation in the AG's office additionally?
So I don't want to speak for the whole board at this point, but that is something that the board should discuss.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, before I move on to the next one, we have as a board our work session at 3 o'clock next Monday that we were going through all of the sealed minutes. And we want to add discussion about this and want to request Dana to ask of our attorney or town council, I should say, at that time.
Wait, what were you saying? We should go about what?
Do you want to add this discussion to our agenda for next Monday during that work session?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. That way we can figure out what we should have Dana ask our town council.
We will put that on, I'm sorry. You'll put that on as an agenda item for your Monday meeting next Monday? In addition to the review of the non... Alright, thanks.
And just a point of clarification for anybody, because we will be going through sealed non-public minutes. It is expected that, of course, it is a public meeting, but it is expected that we'll probably be in non-public most of the time to discuss previously sealed non-public minutes. So don't be too surprised if you show up and you can't actually hear too much until we unseal those minutes. Moving along in our appointments, so thank you very much to the presenters. Hopefully we've been able to address and move forward. Moving on in our appointments is the Salt Shed Subcommittee. Do we have a representative from them here?
I'm one of the members, but really I've got nothing to say.
All right. They've requested to be on the appointment list. Dana, what did they give you for a reasoning for that so we can try to consider something?
We received a letter from the chairman of that committee asking what, if anything, the select board would like to have them address. Is the committee going to continue and what would they be doing now that the site for the salt shed has been located? It was formed with the purpose of finding a location of the salt shed. That's done. And so there was a letter that came in requesting what the board's pleasure was going forward.
All right, thank you. And what does the board think of this one?
I thought we discussed the committee would stay together and figure out, to me, I guess the salt shed or just whatever it's going to look like. Would we have to do that, Mr. Rule Agent? You have something in mind? You know what you're going to do or anyway, or is, I know you're doing the driveway.
I, I have in mind what we, what would be nice, but it's what we can afford and you just go around and find what you want that somebody else has already built and designed and work off of that. Figure out how many yards of sand you want to keep undercover and how many yards of salt and...
Then it's pretty much a lean-to type of building in a sense, right?
Well, no, it has to be done, right? I mean, that part's going to have to be engineered up there where the salt shed's going to be, so you don't get the salt leaching down into the, where the sand's going to go with no salt and it's a different story, but where the salt's going to go in the right material, because salt doesn't like cement and it cracks it and stuff. I mean, there is some thought put into it, but that's going to be, that's going to be a couple of years. I mean, I can't see being down there having sand undercover next summer, maybe. I mean, we've got to get the money. There's a lot to it. Right now, we have a problem that you folks don't know about when we were down there the other day. The boundary on the left-hand side, there's no room to put a ditch in.
When you say left-hand side, do you mean when facing the building from the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, from the road.
Where the road is on the left-hand side, you look at them ribbons that I marked off. There's a boundary at the top, there's a boundary at the bottom. They kept telling me there was another boundary down here and it went on an angle and I kept telling them, no. That's where it is. Well, that's where it is because the paper that I got from Russell the other day, and you measure everything out, it goes on an angle up top, the land that we bought. To do that road right, we need another 20 feet to the left that we need to purchase from them folks. Or we need to do some major fillings in that ravine that's going up there because...
Can you fill a ravine? No?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can't, I mean, you can fill it, but is it legal?
Dee, with money, you can do anything.
Well, yeah, that's true.
So...
So do you think this committee should still be stayed together?
No.
No?
I think the committee has done a good job. They found us the piece of land I wanted, the best for the town. That was the piece of land that I had a sand shed committee long before this committee and that was the piece that we were working on getting. So we wanted after George Cummins and before George was there with Jamie Fortune.
It was after.
Jamie Fortune was on the committee and there was a couple other. And so the committee did a great job. We got the piece of land and that's my opinion. Get the road up there. There's a lot to do to get that piece of land prepped before there's a building there and then we've got to have the money to put the building up.
That would be helpful.
So...
So I just want to remind people that if you're going to speak, thankfully we can all hear in it pretty well, but if you want to speak, we do have a microphone. You can come up and provide that if you need. We did have another...
I just wondered, where is this land you're talking about?
Directly behind the safety building. Up on the hill behind the safety building. Now the question was, where is this land?
So I mapped that out from Battle Street to the stone wall. It's 390 feet up over the hill, as good as I could with my phone and the apps and everything. But being off two or three feet, which you could be, so I don't know what you want to do. I don't know, want to hire a surveyor, see how close I am. I mean, four feet would be a lot better. Fifteen to twenty would be a lot better. I mean, we got almost four inches of rain, what'd you say we got the other night?
Three and a half inches of rain. And that road is different there.
With no ditch or any, the road didn't move.
Yep, no washout, no nothing.
The way it is, but I just don't want to do something on someone else's property to cause a stink and then this gentleman might say, do what you want, but if he sells the land in a year or 10 years, we need to do it right. I'm glad I noticed that before we got a lot more money into it.
So we never had a survey when we bought that land?
Not the, not the five acres that we already own. And all we had, well, all the committee had was just that one line going across. I don't believe the back, the back was ever surveyed. They just paid that surveyor to chop four... Am I correct? Is it 14 or 17? It's whatever acres out for the gentleman that owns the land and they just, we just paid them to put a line through there. The rest of it's not surveyed.
Yeah, when, when that came up, Chris presented it to the select board at the time, which was Chris, myself and Bianca in a, in the work session meetings. And the choice was to either pay for the line and the new bound markers to be properly surveyed and the rest to be calculated based on existing borders since we weren't concerned about the other borders of the new property or to fully survey the new property purchase. All of that would be behind the safety building, so even if we had fully surveyed that new land, that probably would not have accounted for this, which sounds like it was during the purchase of the land for the safety building in the first place. So that would be something to consider going forward and how we want to look at it. But that's giving ahead to different topics. So we're talking about the commission for the Salt Shed Subcommittee and...
I'm sorry.
And whether they should still be, A, in effect and B, if so, what their charges. And it sounds like we have already used their expertise to find and locate the property that the salt shed was to be on. And while they have lots of expertise, I don't know that they're going to have expertise in salt sheds themselves from road aspects. What does the rest of the board think?
I'm kind of with you on that. I don't, at this point, you know, I mean, it's not that they couldn't be pulled back together or something would come to the next level or, you know, somebody to do the research of what the building, what the best building and the type of building it and begin with pointing out the, you know, what needs to be engineered, what doesn't. So I don't, I personally don't see a need, but that could be my second point.
Dee?
I don't really know, to tell you the truth. Yeah, I, I mean, really, they've done their work, I guess, so...
Yeah, they did a good job.
Yeah, so we can always use volunteers at other places if they want to do something else. I'm sure we can find something.
There is no lack of ability to use volunteers.
Yeah, that's right.
All right.
So we should be thanking, sending a letter if we're not going to have them? Should we send a letter to each one of them thanking up their time and...
I would be fine with that.
I would, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it sounds like the collective is saying that we should thank and disband the salt shed committee.
Okay, yeah.
All right, I would accept a motion for that.
I can, I'll motion that, we disband the salt shed committee and send letters of thanks to our volunteers.
All right, I would second that. I will call, myself, all right?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, thank you to the salt shed committee, and that moves us on to the next, so that's gonna be our department head reports. May the chiefs come on down.
The prices aren't right either.
The price.
So, we even have to turn on mic?
Yeah, we don't have to chase it.
Who do you want first, my friend?
The Russian vote? Uh, go ahead, you were already starting to talk to us about some of what I would do, your good bring up, so.
Sure, so, on the sand shed road, we'll have to figure out what direction we wanna go in, but we don't have to do that right at the moment.
What, what happens about, now that you've come, against, I mean, what you're saying is, you got it, I just saw, you got it up in there?
Well,
And, but you don't have the drainage you'd like to see.
Correct, what we did, what we did the other day is, we just went up and cleaned the short shrubby brush off the bank that was there and brought, brought the crap out of that whole brush off, and then when we got looking around in the boundaries, and yeah, it's closed, it's right in the middle of that bank, the way I have it mapped out. It will still work, but the ditch that everybody was talking about we wanted and all that, for all runoff they claimed that we were gonna get, isn't gonna be there, but we can put a catch basin, an in-drop catch basin up a little bit further and bring the water across, and there's things you can do, but we just have to go a different route, I'm gonna have that ditch up through there like I explained and change the plan.
So, at this point, you're not, you're not feeling that we should get it surveyed, so you make sure that the line that you think is there?
Well, it would be neat, it would be neat to, you know, if I'm off four feet, you know what you have to work with, or maybe the gentleman there, you know, if he would sell you fifteen feet by four hundred feet to make it right, because if you're gonna build the driveway up there, you must do it right the first time for future, for something down the road, fifteen, twenty years, instead of just having a cat path up there. I mean, I can get up and down the hill one eight feet wide, but twenty years down the road?
So, do you need like a motion from us to, to at least investigate, what, see if we can get a price from a surveyor? And, or should we just make a motion to?
The thing, the first thing to do is just see if that, the neighbor would sell us another fifteen, twenty feet wide, forty feet long up there, and then they'd have to set the bounds again, and I mean, it's a process and it's money, but, and then if not, if he says, no, I don't want anything to do with you folks, then we'll set it all the way away closer to the safety building. Just have to put a rock wall in there and make it happen.
So, how do we report on that? Do we just?
I guess what I need to do is put permission from you folks, I'll go talk to him and feel him out and
Right, because if you can't, yeah.
And go back to Dan.
Yeah, that's the best way, cause we see what they feel.
I mean, if he thinks it's worth a million, we're not gonna go there.
Right.
Right, so, until we know that, I, I was just trying to kind of, in a sense, move it along so you know your next directions. And so, that's what I would say, you go see the guy and see what he thinks.
Does that make sense with you, chief?
It does. I wonder if there's a possibility for a ten-foot right-of-way, which would carry over to whoever purchased it?
Oh, you mean, you mean indeed it right-of-way?
Technically possible, but, I mean, at that point, you're basically purchasing it right-of-way, you might as well purchase
The line.
But, what do you suggest at this point for us to?
You know, I, I think it would be better if the town wrote a letter explaining the situation, asking if they'd be interested, so you have something in writing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I have nothing to do with it, but
No, no, you're right.
But, I thought it would be probably better to
Yeah.
Write a letter.
I, I, well, and I, I just think also, Chatten would do about it for, she, he, whatever. At least you'd be forewarned, 'cause some, you know, not, what am I trying to say? Meaning like, oh, I see what they're trying to do, not like we're, we're trying to put in a, maybe your highway, or these thinking, I don't want that next to my property, just kind of.
Well, I agree with that, after the letter goes out.
Okay.
And I think, I think we could send a letter we'd like to be with. I almost think the owner is Mrs. McAllen, and I don't think she's in Webster. So, but we can work on the other, yeah.
Okay.
At the time, we had several, when the original purchases done, we had several back and forths with her and the caretaker, her, the person being in charge of her and the land, which I believe is one of her sons.
I've dealt with Mr. Jim McAllen, and I believe he's, he's also a person to talk to. Very nice people.
Right, and then if it's, and then if it's stupid money or something, then we'll just go the other way? There's a world is a way.
All right.
All right, so that puts the boots to that, so we want highway or fire first? We'll go with fire, 'cause I got all the, we're at a hundred and eight calls to date. The weekend was quiet because of the rain. Good, so, that's good. The chicken barbecue is the twenty-fourth of this month. So, that's, they've been doing like hot ta, ta, hotcakes, thank you, Dee, for putting that in your paper.
I'm putting all the papers, by the way.
At the safety building the other day, last, yeah, last Friday, when I was there, I had water in on the floor in the truck bay. Up where the heater goes up through the ceiling, the two heaters, the exhaust, the plastic or rubber boot up there must be tired and leaking, so I went open and got Phil and I showed it to him, so, 'cause he takes care of stuff there.
I bet you that's the leaky roof over there, yeah.
So, it wasn't major, it wasn't horrible, but it's, it started, so that needs to be addressed before too long. The pumps, the pumps will be tested next month in, all serviced by Perkins Pump. And then next month is the inspection and maintenance of the vehicles over to Charlie Boyce Davisville. We're at fifty-one point twenty-eight percent of our budget left, so that gives us fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-two cents today. Thank you, Wendy, for getting these out. I told you, yeah, last month, we had lost our own officers all together. Anybody have any questions on the firehouse? We have two young ladies that just finished up their EMT class, and they're on state test done. One of them had it this month, I'm not sure about the other one. We have two young men that are almost, they're three-quarters of the way through their firefight at one class that they've taken in Sunapee. Two nights a week, and at the academy, most of the day, either on Saturday or Sunday, so that's like a full month class, so we're pretty proud of them, young men. We have a new, Sean Tumi is our new fire marshal, City Conqueror, he took over for Paul. Let me see if I can, yeah. Nice guy, good guy to work with, personal friend, so it's all working good on that side. Capillary meeting, been ten and a half months a month, forest fire warden meet starts back up, they haven't had one of them for over a year. That's this next week coming, so I think we're opening back up.
So, one of the kind of longstanding things that you've been working on, I know it's been the new fire equipment?
Yes.
How is that coming along? I believe last time we were still waiting for an updated quote.
It is an updated quote, because I've changed the cab and chassis, because now with the newer stuff, things change, and the other truck had a two-piece frame, and I really didn't like that in a fire truck or any truck, so now the International has a one-piece frame, so what happens with a two-piece frame is the salt in the crud and stuff, if you're a truck owner, it just ruins them. So, I'm working on a single frame, cab and chassis. They built a couple of these Internationals, grew up in Maine, and I'm doing some research on that and working with E1, the vendor that's building them trucks, so just, so I might have thrown a monkey wrench into the loop, but I just, for spending almost a half a million dollars, I want something that's gonna last more than twenty years, you know, reach out another, up to twenty-five, maybe thirty years. So,
Do you have any rough expectation of when we might see that kind of quote from them?
I talked to him last Friday, actually, and he's waiting to, it's all, it's all put together with an engineer, several engineers, with the pump company, truck company, tank, and it's, it's quite a process. It is work in progress. Chris Champagne is the man's name that I'm dealing with.
Any other questions about fire? No?
On the highway, we changed the culvert on the White Plains Road, where it comes off the state the other day, that's been nothing but a headache for a long time. And we changed that, and that's all new. So, maybe next Christmas Day, when it's raining, we won't be over there getting that unplugged, and then I waited almost six weeks for the one-foot culvert that I needed up on top of Win Pocket Road. So, now, Win Pocket Road and the Call Road, all of them in the last few years, then, then we're all plastic pipes, 'cause the pipes that were changing, our twenty-year pipe, the bottom of them, brought out and the road sat in. So, I'm gonna change one tomorrow on Pleasant Street that's fallen, and get that done. Conquer Drive was going real well. We ripped off the tar and the engineer called a couple of times just to make sure that things are going well, and then Jeff, the young man that's in charge of the waterworks, a great guy to work with. So, they have the temporary water all in place, and all, and the bungs from the house back to the street are ready to be hooked in. Last Friday, they took a water sample to Conquer to get tested, and once the water test comes back through the temporary piping, then they can hook up the houses. And then, once the houses are hooked up, we can go back down there and get the rocks and stuff out of the road, and then if we get into an old pipe, we haven't caused them trouble. So, they were hoping that that, that everything went good with the test this week. By Friday, at the end of this week, they'd have their part done, so we could start down near the wall and be back to work on that project. Great folks to work with, but I don't know what's gonna happen now with the best they're in down there. Block grant. There's still eighty-five point sixty-six percent money left in that, that's sixty thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty cents. That's block grant. On the general budget, there's forty-nine point seventy-seven percent left of that, so that's a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred dollars and fourteen cents left in that. And Wendy sent me one, Phil, he was, Phil usually takes care of this, and I work with him close on the budget maintenance for the safety building. Looks like there's forty-four percent, point fifty-one percent left in that, seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents left in the safety building budget. Get Gray, Ashen Hall, I got a call from Nancy Van Loon, I know they're trying to settle that out, so they want the road just as smooth as they can, so they can get a good, for their house, so I went up there last Friday, Monday.
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, Larry went up with the grader and smoothed that up to make her smile. And, like the chief said, we got, what, three and a half inches of rain, and the ditches in Webster is something to be proud of.
All the roads held up high, not one waterfall anywhere, not even a multi-starble washout.
The only trouble that we had was the dead trees, got waterlogged, and then they'd fall out into the street. So, I chased them two or three different times.
It was when Dave called me.
Yeah.
He was already there.
Yeah.
He was there to take care of it.
Phil called the other day, the phone rang, and I said, yeah, I'm standing, I'm sitting in front of it, it's on Roby Road, how did you get this so quick? So, yeah, no, the ditches are great. Yeah. Good ditches. Keep good roads.
So, you mentioned that hopefully next week, we'll be able to get back down to Concord if they're continuing their current plan. What do we expect to, where should people expect to see you working during this week?
Well, I did a private job today, because the town only has so much to do. They need to work on them every day. Tomorrow, we're gonna be on Pleasant Street. This pipe just fell in there, and then there's two or three rocks right in the area where the excavator's there that's coming up through the tar. Might done with Wednesday, or tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, I don't know, let's see if we're still alive coming.
Sounds good. Any other questions for roads?
Just a little comment, Close Pen Bridge, I think, looks like it's getting some more nice holes in the bridge. Little things.
Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's another afternoon of coal patching.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I just thought.
Yeah, no, no, I, we've been going over that quite a bit when we were coming out of the safety building
Yeah.
to get rid of the crap.
I knew you do it fairly often, how often do you have to go down to your coal patch then?
Well, probably fill in a hole once a month or so. Not, not horrible.
But you can't see the rivers to the bridge anyway, so that's good. Then I'm gonna get really worried. You're doing a good job.
Yes, question?
Yes, please.
Uh, just wondering if, if the work that's being, the drilling that's being done on the Pond Hill Road, is that with the town, or is that a private landowner? is that with the town or is that a private landowner?
Oh, I have no clue. I, nothing I'm doing.
Is it actually in the road or on the road?
It's to the side of it. I thought they were just kind of going to bring that hill down so you could see what's coming either way. But I thought it was the town.
I know, I know way back Paul King and I went out there and looked at the driveway from that. They might be working on that.
Right at the beginning?
Yeah, right across from the other driveway. The guy that sells the eggs and stuff. Right there. I know there's a new home going up in there that we look, we approved that driveway. I think it was last fall. But I'm not sure what's going on up there. They might be up there working.
That's what it is. We're putting in driveway and people will put a house eventually, maybe a couple of years down the road.
All right. Thank you very much, Chiefs. And as we last portion of the department heads, Dana, would you like to talk about the town?
Oh, God. Jeez, you all right, Dana?
I'm sorry, I already got his name.
Mike is speaking.
No, Chief, we're thinking.
Don't worry, I put it in.
Yes, please.
I'm not that fast.
Well, see, we already talked about tickets and everything tonight, so.
So as of the 29th, we have $146,726.27 remaining of our $296,430 budget. Just equate it to 49.5% left in our budget, which is right on the power grid. Breakdowns on calls. I gave a lot of that from the, from June 1st to the 29th. There were 72 motor vehicle stops. I find $849.40. I went over the stops on Battle Street alone. We had six arrests with a total of 18 charges. The scary part is, almost every one of those charges was drug-related. So we had fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamines, all narcotics. Almost everyone. I think it was 11 charges out of the 18 were all drug-related charges. We're seeing more of that than we have anything right now. It's, it's kind of scary to have, have a little town. And it's all people passing through. That's probably a good part. It's an unbelievable thing to have that many drug charges brought forward. We had 82 calls for service for the month. Probably should put it there. One of the arrests was for public officials pirating from certain bribe dealings. I know that's kind of one of the mentioned. But we had animal complaints and it seems like it's every month, it's always the same complaints. Animal complaints. We serve a number of fine unlicensed dogs. Civil matters, assisted by the department, other agencies, domestic violence services, motor vehicle complaints. We've got a few of those. Police information requests, sex offender registries, house checks. You get a lot of those. Pistol permits and residential burglary, I'll share a few of those in the last month. But other than that, it was relatively safe. Everybody was safe. We had no, no accidents, which was really good. Short and sweet.
Just to go back to the previous topic that had you talking about these, with the speed sign. It sounded like you expected to then put that down by Robey Road once again.
I'm going to put it right next to his sign, right next to Mr. Gandy's sign. It's probably the safest place that you'll see it coming from both angles. Because his sign sticks out. I mean, that's the first thing you see when you go down the hill. If I pocket a little closer to the road and back away from the sign going towards Webster, you'll see it both ways. When you crest the top of it, they'll coming down from Park, from Parkington Way, you'll see the sign right off the bat. And the other one, you'll notice it as soon as you get down on the dip a little bit. By then, the sign will be flashing.
Does that, does the sign record amount of speeds as like numbers of how many times?
It records how many cars go by and the average speed.
The time and the time.
And it does the time.
So what, average speed per car or average speed overall of them?
It'll, it'll give you any high speeds, but then it'll give you an average speed of all the cars that went through. But it's nice because it'll give us account too also of what's going through. Right now, the control board in the system, apparently got water in it. And then that went out, so they got another one on order. We talked to them today, they said they should have it up and run by the end of the week.
And then recommendations on, you know, you put it out there and you give it, I don't know how long, and then, so to see if it's actually working? Because you'll kind of be able to see that, I would assume.
Well, especially when they'll see the sign there. And we'll give them a couple of days to see the sign. And there'll be a cruiser sitting there. Because you will get the feel of saying, "Well, I wonder how fast I can get the sign to show." Which happens well. And if there's a cruiser sitting there, they find out how fast it shows.
In my old hometown, someone decided that they were going to try to give it to, to wrap the numbers that didn't exist and make it show zeros. It didn't, but, but they had a nice find to go with. All right. As I was starting to say before I got myself mixed up, because we'd already had the chief talking. For department heads, Dana and then possibly Wendy, since she's here, if you would talk about the town and the monthly finance summary.
The, our budget is in good shape. There is one account that's overdrawn, is the welfare line, which of course is one of my lines. But I don't know what I can do about that. I haven't had an abundance of cases, but I've had a persistent case that I did not want to help this month for various reasons. But I may end up having to. But at any rate, that is really the biggest problem that we have. Sometimes our budget, we can't really go by percentages because we pay bills, certain things once a year. And it's, skews that up. I would like to just say, well, Wendy's here. It's been a pleasure having Wendy helping out with the finances. And I think we've got things pretty much in order. Having said that, Wendy will be out for a few weeks and you're stuck with me again. But anyway, she can fix it when she gets back. We had spoken about when we changed the select board meeting schedule, that sometimes there would be weeks that the accounts payable and the payroll would not coincide with the select board meeting. And so I was asked to report to you on, once a month, the activity in those, even though you may have signed them and you already know. But what I have, since, since the last ones that you approved, we had June 14th payroll was $22,169.36, which you approved. The June 28th payroll was $17,371.73, which Davis, the only one, saw, been giving you that design tonight. Accounts payable, June 7th, $2,665.73. June 14th. And, and it was kind of odd because when we met in June, we kind of got ourselves off schedule. So we had payrolls every, accounts payable every week for the last couple of weeks. July 5th, oh, June 28th. And that is mostly made up of $338,000. That was a check written to the trustees of the trust funds. We funded the capital reserve fund, highways and roads for $200,000 plus $138,000 for the expendable trust funds. And we will do the rest when fall taxes come in. Because we have to save money now to pay for the school. Finally, July 5th, $91,329.64. Wendy, did you do anything that I've not said that I should say?
We're still waiting for the audit.
We have, we are still waiting for the audit. We have spent a lot of time getting things pulled together for him. And much of it is that his schedule has been, he's been fitting us in when he can. And I'm expecting to hear from him somewhat soon. We've given him everything he's asked for and it has been a challenge. But I appreciate Wendy's help with her own, and I'm hoping that maybe in the next three weeks, we'll have, it'll be done. And when the report comes out, we'll probably all be doing it in September or October.
The only other thing about that is that once the audit does come back, that will adjust the monthly score of the highway because of the things in the fire department that shows what was spent. Those will all be changed in the journal entry because they were things that would actually last years. So that's one of the things we're waiting for, is the journal entries to come from the auditors so I can adjust all those so that we'll be more on track with what you're now is really at. So I think that mostly affects Emmett's budgets more so than the police department.
That's what the incomferences is.
Right.
Those are what the incomferences that went into this year. I guess that's as far as financial-wise and office-wise, that's what I have. Thank you again. I appreciate everyone working with me very, very helpful. And I appreciate it. I think so hard to get along. Days.
All right, any questions for them from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we overdrawn in the welfare budget now for the whole year? Is that what we're trying to say?
That's what I'm saying, yes. We're overdrawn, I think, $2,800.
So far?
Yeah.
And it's only June?
It's only June, so, you know, we're.
And our budget is, I mean, our budget goes from January through December.
Right. And so obviously, it's the bottom line, we're interested, let me just get it in front of me. We do have an account that we can fund this from in the, is it expendable trust fund? Or is it the capital reserve? I think it's an expendable trust fund. But we haven't decided whether we're going to do that or not. I had a couple of cases that were expensive. $2,863 is what we're overdrawn. So I am, percent remaining is minus 130.15%. So that is certainly something. But we only budgeted $2,200.
Very cheap for welfare.
And so, is that realistic? I don't know. This year because of COVID.
Yeah, I will say that during that budgeting process, we did look at that. And I think we actually based it to that this year. And, but we did also say that we had the fund that should be used going above that. So I would definitely suggest, I'm seeing nods from the board, but it would definitely be a suggestion to look at using the fund going forward since that's the purpose of it.
I thought we'd wait till the, more toward the end of the year and request the trustees to withdraw some money as we offset that.
Okay, so as a business, you can offset.
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether we can offset it or we put it as a revenue.
It would be incumbent to patent, but, you know, we don't, we don't usually combine revenue and expenses together because then it makes the water muddy.
The auditors mentioned to me, because last year with COVID, we offset a lot of expenses. And I shouldn't have gotten that.
So if he just put a sign up out front, hell, wanted, nobody's going to stop.
Yeah, right.
No, no one is because everyone's looking. Thank you.
All right, any other further questions? All right. So thank you. And we'll move on to our next, which is whole business, town properties.
Are you, are you folks all good?
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to get caught up on the view this week. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't forget the cup, Chief. I got it, I wrote it down.
Whatever you wish for.
It all changed around. See? Yep, I'll be all written in the book.
I'll let you go ahead. We've done that in advance, so we'll just keep it that way.
All right. What did I do with the mic?
It's on the end. Yeah. Top, top, top.
Okay. So we had a bid. These are lots on Winter Terrace. The town combined three lots, make them one. We did send a bid spec out and ask for the policy. We sent it to a butters. And I think there were three butters that we sent it to and we received two bids. We did ask for a minimum bid of $4,000. And I spoke to you last time about that. And it was basically, we figured what taxes we had out collected on those properties. So the first bid. This is a bid from Philip Stripmadder, and Philip's here. And the bid for what is now Lot 10, map 10, Lot 158, which is the three lots, the 2.35 acre lot now, $4,351.
There's no surprises then.
The second bid is from Walter Masehill Jr. And his bid is $4,250. And those are the two bids that we received for this lot.
All right. Per policy, it sounds like we just look at the top bid as they are both the butters. Please correct me if I'm wrong. All right.
Parents, where?
So I would move that we accept the top bid from Philip Stripmadder. On myself, I?
I.
I.
All right. Congratulations on your new property. I believe we do require the merger of that. And Dana and or Russ can help ensure that all happens.
We'll talk with Phil about it. And I assume he'll bring me money, which would be nice. And I'll prepare, it will take a few weeks, but we'll share a deal.
Dana, would you accept pennies?
I have to tell you a funny story. I had someone who was paying a fine and they were mad at me. And they brought in a wheelbarrow full of pennies. And I had a summer that I worked in a bank and I learned how to roll coin. And I was awfully glad I did because I was determined. I was, I went and got wrappers and I rolled it and rolled it. I made him wait. And then I got to the end of it and I was off seven cents and I made him wait. He told me years later, he says, "I'll never do that again." But I win, you Phil.
All right, so that takes care of the first town property. And do we have others that we are moving forward on at this point? Or is it on to the other?
We have two that are, will be coming up very shortly. One is eighteen Monver Drive. I'm waiting for a few things on that and I'll be sending out. That is a house and a lot. And that we're going to advertise on the town's website as well as in the next grapevine. What's available. I had brought that to you before and suggested $65,000 for that. So that would be, we'll be advertising that. We have another one that I have offered, I've had to offer to the former owner as well as there may be things in the house, which I've also, I have to give him 90 days to get anything out that he wants. So that is in the process. And finally, our property at nine Pana Cook Square, uh, Circle. Circle, I always say square. I have not gotten someone to fix up the fire damage, but that's, that's coming up. And so hopefully we'll be selling that in the fall. And that also needs to be offered to the former owner with a 90-day grace period. Those are the ones we have right now. We haven't really, we do have some more lots that we might be looking at, but nothing really right now.
Right, and so it looks like the rest of that is for this building, which would be the stove hoods and the liability coverage.
Yes, stay with me a minute while I get my bearings. The stove hood. We have two bids on the stove hood. I did ask for a third one, which I have not been able to get yet. And the first one that we got from Hampshire Fire Protection was $2,585 to upgrade the hood's adhesion system to the current standards and codes. And the next bid I got was from a company called Sentis, which is in Bow. And they quoted about $1,500 to do that job. I think that's a pretty good price. Would you like to wait for the third bid to see?
Swinstone Hood.
Who did we ask for the third one?
I offered a company in Franklin.
Carnell.
Carnell, yeah.
And roughly, how long ago did we ask?
Last week.
Gee, I don't know because now this will be a public record. So if they don't, they can look at this and bid lower if they want to.
That's true.
Very nice. What's an all-on-the-way?
See, I hadn't thought of that, but it's true. And because it's not really a bid, it needs a quote, so.
And we did request the quotes, which is, A, it's not over 10,000. But even if it were, the requesting of multiple quotes would have fulfilled our OPE of that. So I would be in favor of going forward and getting this done since it's a safety achievement. It needs to be done before the town hall can be used for the kitchen.
Right.
And how soon did they say?
I have not gone, I haven't asked them.
Okay. Just, you know, a quote, $1,500, but they can't do it for six months. Not because of that, yeah, but that would be a good question and
So if the board wanted to go ahead with this, I mean, obviously I'd give them a reasonable amount of time to get it in and if you tell me, well, I can't get there till next summer, but I mean, I'll work.
Right.
So does the board have any further comment on this or thoughts?
No, but I'm sure that the group that does a chicken barbecue on home, they would like to have a fix so they can make some money in this day and age.
Most likely.
Yeah.
All right, I would make the motion that we accept the lowest reasonable bid as provided that they are able to do the work in a reasonable timeframe.
Second.
Myself, aye?
Ah, aye.
All right.
That was easy. Where's the button?
Liability coverage.
That was a letter from the insurance company. And they were telling you, insurance companies never really have good news when they send you these letters, but how expensive the insurance is and they're having trouble due to so many claims as far as cyber problems and property damage caused by cyber problems and unreported property acquisitions, vacant structures, the left state bill. They're having trouble having insurance companies, we're in a pool, an insurance pool. And so they have insurance companies that cover these things. And they really have not given us a figure for our upcoming insurance bills. But I think this was just a place marker telling us that we're going to expect an increase. And I'm hoping we'll have a better figure once we get to our budget time.
I was gonna say, is that increase as a expected, like second half payment? Or is that an increase for expected next year's budget?
This will be next year's budget and we pay this one for the year.
Okay.
But we are in a three-year, I believe we're in a three-year thing with them.
An agreement as far as the, yes, yes.
So that might save us.
Well, and I think they, I think their treaty is right and I understand that
But they still go up, right? It's like uniforms and you get to sign that little dotted line and they give you good numbers and then all of a sudden the price increases.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that was, I just wanted you to be aware of the letter from the insurance.
All right. Any further questions or comments on this?
No.
All right, so moving on, we'll move on to our new business, first of which is Town Hall Streams. Go ahead, take your leave.
I can't keep this on. I think our question on Town Hall Streams is, when would you like us to cancel it? I think we didn't want to cancel it too. We were sure everything. So I think we just paid the bill to $100,000. Okay.
Yeah, we're going in this one.
Yeah, okay.
I know that we pay monthly. When is the, is it per calendar month? Or is it a date within there that we're paying?
I think Wendy has the July bill in there. So it's at the beginning of the month, they set this bill for that month.
Okay. So this would be effective to cancel because we now have our own streaming service. The question would be about the retention. I know that part of the, at least what was said about the contract with them was that they would retain things for X number of years after recording. The question I think would be if that is true once we have canceled our continual recording with them. If that is true, then I think it would make sense to simply cancel going forward. If that is not true, then I would suggest that we pay for this month so we still have access to pull the previous recordings that we have not yet streamed, that we have not streamed to YouTube to be able to update, upload as part of our own archive to YouTube.
I think I'm too late to cancel for this month. I think we're already obligated for July.
Okay. So in that case, I would suggest that we definitely cancel it for next month. And that we ask the question of that retention to know whether Russ and/or I need to pull off pre-existing video to make sure we still have a copy. That is the rest of the board.
Agreed. That's funny. You're the IT guy, that means.
Well, it makes sense. If we're planning on, make sure you have it in office. Move on.
So I would make the motion that we cancel Town Hall Streams effective next month.
Second.
All right, myself, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
Yes.
Our next policy review session.
This is on there. And it's appropriate that it came up tonight, but we do have several policies. And I think it might be a great time if we took some time and reviewed them and see if any of them need updating. And also I'd like to put them together in a book, what I would call a code book or something like that, that would make it easier, I think, to research them because right now we don't have that and I think it's difficult to track them. So that's really why that is on there. And I just wanted your ideas on that, if you thought that was a good idea. And also about reviewing the policies. Since we're also working on non-public matters.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we'll do it right when we do it then.
Yeah, I think it's gonna take us a little bit because it's a lot of them.
Right, but you do a little bit of it.
But yeah, I mean, you could chip on it, yeah.
We reviewed a couple tonight.
Yeah, so you're You're all set, you're ready.
We can move on from that.
I know that in past years, whether it was library and some others, the auditors have had suggestions of which ones we should basically reaffirm or commit to. So, and that was usually based on date. So if you can order them kind of oldest date to forward and we can look at them kind of in that order. And then we could do the reaffirming of it if appropriate and/or any adjustments if appropriate.
Sure, sure. And actually, we just, you just renewed investment policy, I believe, earlier this year. So that's, that was one that was recently done. And I thought of, I mean, the other part of it is that we also have that policy as far as both the police and the fire as far as charging for false alarms. And you seem to get lost if you don't track them.
It's more unless you put together a policy book. You just go grab.
Simple enough, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, simple. Part of my house.
Even I can do that, yeah. Russell won't have to do that.
And I know you've also talked about a chance to go over kind of policy with the various committees, boards, etc.
Oh, thank you, yeah. What I've done in the past in past lives, in the spring, of course, that wasn't during COVID, when new officers came and were, new people were appointed to boards, we used to do maybe a dinner or something, get everyone together. And first of all, so everyone could meet each other, they knew, or have some social time. But also then we'd invite someone in either from the municipal association or anyone else who I could get to come for free to give a, to give a rundown on the right to know law and what board members really need to do. I know, Marla, you went to the select board training and they kind of know that. But a lot of people don't have that opportunity on other boards. And I think it's very helpful to keep us all, do what we need to do. So I'd like to kind of think about that in the fall, pull something together.
That's right, yeah.
And probably, you know, summer's not a good time to do it, but October, so maybe a good time. We could have a dinner downstairs. Russell will be doing all the cooking. It doesn't have to be fancy, but I think it'd be, it'd be nice, so. Thanks Dave for reminding me.
All right, any further questions on that or comments? All right, I think that's great. And we'll move on to the next one, which is timber tax warrants.
Do you want to talk about that?
So we've received two reports of cut. One was for an extension and one was for a filed order this year. So I just have the summaries here. I just gave the board to sign them tonight at the meeting so that I can send out awards to that quarter. Both were filed on time.
And we were, yeah, we were gonna ask the board, other than something like the doomage situation, I don't see that we really need to bring these to put you out of meeting, but just have you sign them.
Yeah, I think it's good to review though, just to make sure that, you know, we're not and do you just, what do you just take the middle row number as a, as a stomach rate?
The stomach rate, they're usually supposed to report that themselves.
Who?
Where the stomach rates go on.
No, no, no.
No, stomachs you're talking about, the DRA numbers are from their website. So they post certain periods of time. So for example
So you use the note, you take the middle number, not the high and the low?
So it goes by the high and the low. And then you do the timber assessment worksheet, which is they're supposed to provide me about the access to that. I put those into the table formula and they provide and it tells me what the rating would be if I'm cut. And then that, I'm gonna go to the Excel spreadsheet and it pumps out the numbers.
Yeah.
The only time it gets a little tricky is when they don't submit that sheet.
Right.
And then I usually call Rick or somebody up there to ask them. How, that's only happened once.
Yeah, it doesn't do a dart in the wall.
No, no, the reason I ask that is just of many, many years of filing reports. Some towns take the highest number, as you can. Some towns, you know, I had one town send it back to me and took my rating sheet and changed it. So I'm just saying, that's why I'm asking.
So the only time I would do the ratings is if they didn't provide me with the rating sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I went to train somebody in Annover, I didn't know how to do them because I was doing them here. They always billed 50% across the board. And I said, you can't do that. You have to know where the timber came from, how big a cut it is, what the accessibility is, what the quality is. So then they stopped that, but it took me to convince them that it's something.
Right, right. But that's just, that wouldn't be the only reason I would say that, otherwise.
I worked for one of those towns that always did the highest, because they told us it's a problem.
But I've never had somebody change my rating sheet and they did that.
That's weird.
That was weird.
So it sounds like we can be reviewing these when we, when we sign them. But since it's just a straight formula, we can just sign it and worry about it unless we're talking.
What we did was have a signing session at the end of the meeting. It's much like we do at the town's variable payroll and MSAs. Angie, everything at the end, we sign them every night.
We're gonna have a lot of fun at the end of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, pods are sitting here. Yeah, we'll get stamps.
All right. I wish we had them here, but I guess we move on to member appointments.
Yeah, we have the Forest Fire Warden, who also happens to be the town's emergency management director, Robert Walensky, was in and he brought me some paperwork. And he has expressed interest in being, I believe that's actually the state that appoints him, but they need the town to approve who they're considering. He is our Forest Fire Warden as well as some other individuals who are firefighters. And he's updated his appointments. And so I just
Meaning that one of us has got backup.
Yes, exactly. So in other words, if he's not available, they could go to Emma, for example, or someone else that would be authorized by the state to issue fire permits. So they're looking for the town to recommend the above persons. I had put this on sharepoint. I don't know if you saw it.
I'm gonna have so much fun, but there
I don't see anyone on here that there was any reason that you shouldn't.
No, I think he's well called.
He was the chief in town for a while, but he's a real, he's a real firefighter in Manchester.
He is.
He's been the Forest Fire Warden increasingly as well.
He's a great guy.
He's the current one, we're just looking to
He is, yeah, he is. And he is, he is a good person.
So do you need a motion or?
So I guess whether it's motion or maybe, I don't So I guess whether it's motion or maybe, I don't, maybe I don't need that, but I do need to sign this form so I can get a show.
Okay, well, make a legal, I'll make a motion that we have Robert Walensky as the, whatever he's gonna do.
Forest Fire Warden. Yeah, this week, yeah.
I'll second that. And so myself, aye.
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 Right. And then Warner River Advisory Committee.
Warner River can have up to, I believe, four members from Webster. And we have one member on there, it's Dan Moran, who is our, we just recommended that. And again, this is disappointed by the, the local river management, New Hampshire Rivers Management Protection Program. This is the nomination form. We've gotten interest for George Emblee on Roth Road to, he's expressed interest to be appointed to that. Dan also said to me, says that would be, that'd be great because he's the one that got me involved in Warner River Advisory. So, and he's done it, he's done it before. So again, that's similar to the last thing, that's going to require signatures for support of having him appointed.
It's much more nice when you know who you're appointing.
Yes.
I know.
Yeah.
Nice guy. And his wife does things, Sally, she does things for the town also. Long, long years, you can't let them know.
That's right.
So I would move that we support the appointment of Mr. Emblee to the Warner River Advisory Committee.
Second.
Myself, aye.
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 All right, moving on, correspondence from Mr. Sansucci.
I think I wanted you to see this just because it's the time of year that we require documents from our utilities. And so he has drafted what he wants from them and I go ahead and put him on the letter head and sent it along and they sent him the information.
So this is his request for utility information, okay?
Exactly.
And why's he want that?
He does that every year so that he can assess the utilities.
He's our utilities.
It's almost like.
I didn't know there was a utility assessment.
It's almost like, you know how the town has the inventories and information for that? While this isn't, while this isn't like that, it is.
With tax.
It's getting, just getting updated information.
Okay.
Wow, that moves us on to public comment, of which they have all left.
They're, yeah, good job with that.
So select board motions, we have our draft minutes still at.
Can I, can I ask something for, and then I'll leave you all to sign your.
Yes, please, but let's, let's make sure it can be heard.
I have a suggestion about the extra stove in the basement that was donated by Michelle. And I was wondering if it would be appropriate to offer her to take it back or to ask her if she minded if Dee put an ad in the paper that if anybody needed an electric stove, that there was one available. Because it's, it's in working condition, there's nothing wrong, other than she, you know, downsized with homes. And I don't wanna see it to disappear like the other stove in the kitchen, but I do, you know, think that if there's somebody in need in the town, it would be a nice offer. But I want to make sure that we go through the right channel because it was donated and was given from Michelle Derby.
She does not want that, I'll ask.
I'm sure not when she helps you out, really.
Yeah, but I do want to go against it if we didn't offer it that way, but.
And the other stove that disappeared, Wendy, I had a, that stove.
I know, we did a good job, but I don't, I don't think Mr. Little needs another one, especially one that works.
I know.
So I thought maybe Dee could put it in the paper.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, you know, I think.
Just gotta write me in.
But you know what it is.
Yeah, sure.
That was my.
And that's like you, like somebody that's in need or?
Yeah, somebody that needs an electric stove, you know, if the stove goes or something, you know, we have it, it was donated to us, so we wouldn't sell it to somebody else, we'd give it away.
Yeah, I think that's a great, a great suggestion.
At least we'd get out of the basement.
We can't take it in the middle of the night and throw it on someone's lawn.
No, you shouldn't do that, somebody might arrest you.
So I would suggest that we get in writing from Michelle that she doesn't want it before we do that, but it sounds fine to me. Do we need any sort of motion for that at this point?
I don't think so, I wouldn't think so.
Thank you.
Would you like to write on the email?
I will, yes.
All right, so since it was handed to me as an actual copy, I'll look at, I'll look at the sealed non-public minutes first, on our last meeting, now we can end it. And so the question, do we have any amendments or comments that need to be made so we can move into non-public if we need to, to discuss them? I do not notice anything that I believe needs to be changed.
I don't, I don't.
All right, so I would move that we accept the non-public select board meeting minutes that are sealed on June twenty first, twenty twenty one, as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, and that moves us along to our normal meeting minutes, which I know I brought up someplace, there we go. And so those are the normal meeting minutes from Monday, June twenty first, twenty twenty one. Now, let's see. Oh, Montra.
Don't worry about me with grammar, but, but I do have something that I just, just 'cause I felt very, I felt very strong, well, just 'cause I didn't.
There's easements, conservation commission appointment, town owned properties, uh, the live streaming policy, um, the emergency relief fund, sealed minutes, the dog and timber taxes and warrants, and then generic comments and motions. Since you mentioned that you had a comment or correction, please go ahead.
Just in the part that the, that the board discussed doomage and agreed to sign, I, I didn't.
Where did you, where did you, where's that?
Which page is that?
What page? Oh, three.
Three, three.
So it just needs to be noted that?
Yeah, that I didn't sign, nor did I agree.
That's all I could.
It's, that'd be, I don't even know if it's a big deal, I just didn't want to.
See, I always put it in whenever it's just each generic, you're on some interview and board discussed and then.
You want to ask both about that indication, she voted no?
Well, was there a vote? There wasn't a vote.
Yeah, but I didn't sign it, it's what pushed it to sign. Right, because I did agree.
They did not sign.
There's something to it.
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, yeah, that's it, that's it.
I'll just say the board agreed to sign a bar.
Right, that's fine. And now it's silly, yes, that's fine, that's why I just. I just, well, I would say to, I would just say, I want it to be noted that I didn't agree.
The board discussed the doomage and Dee and David agreed to sign.
All right, fine, that works.
All right. Oh, I, I have one. I didn't think I did.
Sorry, it's a minute, it's a minute.
But it's page four, line ten, uh, just gonna go, the name is not spelled correctly.
Great.
Good thing you don't have a red pen.
Or what?
No.
My secretary takes one, don't want anything I do. My sister has to be red.
All right, any further comments, corrections or questions on the minutes? Let's see, keep looking, so.
No, that's all right, because I think I put these in the newspaper because I found the Google.
I'm sure you were putting it in.
I changed, no, but you're right, and I, but I changed it, gunnible, I knew that was a mistake, so.
So, so you've already printed in the great mind?
Yeah, I think it is, I'm pretty sure that this one is. It's hard to, until today, I just don't even know, but it's always draft, yeah, so we can make any of the changes. All right.
All right, so I would move that we accept the minutes from Monday, June twenty second, twenty twenty one, as amended.
Second.
Myself, aye.
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 All right. And we are almost done. Trustees of trust funds.
You have that.
Oh, you're fine, you're. No, no, you're fine, no, you're fine. No, I'm not sitting here like this.
I don't know what I've got, I don't know what to, Alex, can I get a little more chicken? Cause that's a long one for the bars. I don't mind you setting that one up.
So all the questions from trustees. And so I would give the request of trustees, trust funds issue a check in the amount of nine thousand three hundred fifty five dollars and ninety cents payable to B H B for invoice zero three four six zero two seven for professional engineering services for closed pin bridge replacement project. These funds to be withdrawn from the bridge and covered capital reserve fund.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Request that, I would request that the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars payable to Computech Integrators for the payment of invoices five nine three nine eight in the amount of three thousand three hundred twenty dollars for the live streaming camera system for public meetings and invoice five nine five zero three in the amount of four hundred eighty dollars for additional hard drive memory space for the town office server. These funds to come from the technology expendable trust fund.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I would request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of five hundred seven dollars and fifty nine cents payable to Boscombe Sand and gravel for quarry pack for the road project on Concord Drive. These funds to come from the highways and roads capital reserve fund.
Second.
All in favor, aye. I would request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of one thousand thirteen thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents payable to lease the flower farm invoices number six four five zero for four thousand seven hundred eighty five dollars, invoice six thousand four hundred fifty, invoice six four five one for three thousand four hundred seventy dollars, invoice six four five two for two thousand two hundred sixty dollars, and invoice six four five six for two thousand seven hundred two dollars and fifty cents. These funds are to come from the highway and roads capital reserve fund.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
We better knew that part.
That's right.
I get a second over here.
Going down through personnel. All right, that concludes all of these. Does, do any of the board members have further questions, comments or other items they wish to address?
Sign the name for that.
No, we gotta sign a million things, right?
All right, so I would move to close this meeting at nine thirty five.
Oh my God. Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you all for joining us, and I will be ending the recording.
Okay.
And you're going to be receiving another check next week.
Oh, okay.
Don't spend it all in the same.